Good evening, welcome to tonight's county commissioner meeting. Good to see everybody here tonight and I will go ahead and ask Commissioner Lohon to ask the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you would, bow with me for a moment, please. Father, we do thank you for the opportunity to gather the freedoms that we have as being citizens of the United States. We thank you so much for those. We just thank you for the county that we live in and the citizens of this county and we just pray that you would bless each and every citizen, that you would bless this county, you would give us direction as we as an official board make decisions. Let us be mindful of our citizens and let us make the proper decisions that are pleasing in your sight. Just forgive us of our sins. These things I pray in Christ's name, amen. Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Lohon. Item number, oh, I'm sorry, we've got to approve this first. Go ahead and seek any approval or any adjustments to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Morgan.
Yeah, I'd like to add, consent agenda item 5E for Stanley County budget amendment.
All right, a motion to add consent agenda item 5E, a budget amendment that should be in front of everybody's seat. Is there a second to that? All those in favor of adding the additional agenda item and approving the agenda as amended, say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. All right, now, item number one on our agenda tonight is the proclamation for National FBLA PBL Week. And the presenters are going to be Stanley Community College, West Stanley High School, and Pfeiffer University PBL chapter representatives.
I'm Stormy Douglas, a representative of the Stanley Community College Phi Beta Lambda Chapter, future business leaders of America. Phi Beta Lambda is a national organization for college students in business and business-related majors and curriculums.
Thank you. February is National FBLA PBL Month and chapters throughout the country are celebrating the opportunities FBLA and PBL make available to high school and college students in business and business-related programs. On behalf of the FBL and PBL chapters in Stanley County, we appreciate your signing the proclamation that makes us part of the national celebration. PBL members from Stanley Community College and Pfeiffer University received awards at last year's FBL, FBLA, PBL competitive events at state level. In turn, both colleges were represented at the National Leadership Conference in San Antonio, Texas. At the concluding awards program, the Stanley Community College chapter was named one of the country's SEAL chapters, one of the country's gold SEAL chapters for the year. And the chapter's entry received national second place for its local chapter annual business report. The chapters have been busy this year with numerous school and community service projects. We will be competing at the state conference in April with state winners heading to Salt Lake City, Utah next June for a national competition. At Stanley Community College, the faculty advisors are Ms. Tammy McElwain and Mr. Dan Hazlitt. At Pfeiffer University, the advisors are Ms. Tina Pressler, Dr. Rashawn and Dr. Rashawn Gross. I would like the other representatives of our chapters who are present this evening to introduce themselves.
My name is Chu. I'm a member of PBL at the Stanley Community College.
My name's Ayanna Bellamy and I'm the vice president of the Pfeiffer University PBL chapter.
My name is Aleah Thomas and I attend Pfeiffer University and I'm the president of PBL at Pfeiffer.
Thank you. One of the highlights of PBL Month is the announcement of our chapter's Business Person of the Year. This year, we are pleased to honor a former PBL member who is now a successful Stanley County Business Person. He is also the president of Stanley Community College Foundation Board of Directors. He has supported PBL through the years by serving as a judge for state PBL competitions and as an event sponsor. The guidelines for the recognition state that the person should provide a positive example of business practices and community support. Thank you for letting us present the award during tonight's meeting. The 2020 Stanley Community College Phi Beta Lambda Business Person of the Year is the owner of Scan Online, a business he founded 20 years ago and is now located in Locust Town Center, Mr. Lee Pickler. Mr. Pickler, will you come to the podium to receive the award? Again, we are proud to recognize Mr. Pickler for his accomplishments and as an inspiration to all of us, as an inspiration to all of us who will be beginning our careers soon. We are also honored to represent Stanley County as we head into the Spring State PBL activities and we thank you for your support through signing this proclamation as we call attention to our organization during National FBLA PBL Month. Thank you all very much.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. Commissioners, in your packet, there's actually a proclamation that has been presented to us on behalf of FBLA and PBL Week. Are there any questions or what's the pleasure of the board with that proclamation? Commissioner Lohon? Commissioner Jordan?
I make the motion that we approve the proclamation declaring February 2nd through rate 2020 is National FBLA PBLA Week.
Motion by Commissioner Jordan, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Lohon. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Guys, I took it upon myself to, I figured this would pass, so I went ahead and signed one and had the clerk stamp it if you guys want, want an official copy of that. Yes? Item number two on tonight's agenda is the outstanding real property taxes for 2019. Presenter will be Mr. Clinton Swearingen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm happy to be here with you tonight. I am here in regards to the 2019 outstanding real property taxes. North Carolina General Statute 105, 369A says the tax collector must report to the governing body the total amount of unpaid taxes for the current fiscal year that are liens on the property. And upon receipt of the report, the governing body must order the tax collector to advertise these tax liens. The report is in your packet, your agenda packet, as of January 27th, 2020, the total amount of unpaid county real property taxes for the current fiscal year, which is 1920. Their liens on real property amount to $1,913,911.43. Upon order by the Board of Commissioners, these tax liens will be advertised in March 2020. I don't have that date set yet, but it will be sometime in March. The stated amount will continue to be reduced as our collections office accepts payments and delinquent notices are scheduled to be mailed early February. They're actually going to be mailed tomorrow. And we'll process that trying to collect these taxes. The report is enclosed in your packet. For reference, when I was here last year, this same time, that number was 1,930,361.04. So we're almost $16,500 better than we were at this point last year. I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can.
Are there any questions for the tax administrator?
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment. Tell all your staff that we appreciate their efforts and we appreciate your leadership.
I thank you, thank you very much. Related comment, it would have been $1,913,925 if Mr. Swearingen's office hadn't called me to figure out what happened to my $12 tax fee for my dog that my wife apparently forgot to send him. So you definitely can't say the man has not been diligent. He called me looking for my $12. He said, "I don't want to put your name in the paper, but I will." So I'm sorry for forgetting that $12, that's my wife's fault. And I thank you for all the hard work you guys do. It is a thankless job. But it's got to get done. Thank you, I appreciate that. I appreciate it.
Any other questions? If not, how does the board wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we issue an order to allow Mr. Swearingen to advertise these tax liens during the month of March 2020.
There's a motion, a motion from Commissioner Lohon and a second from Commissioner Morgan to issue an order to advertise the delinquent tax liens during the month of March 2020. Is there any other discussion? See none. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, board.
Item number three, and Debbie, I have not heard you speak in a long time and I have waited for this day since last Thursday when the agenda came out.
All right.
So I am excited to hear this report because you always add to it.
First of all, let me say to you all, thank you for the opportunity to share this information with you. This is some great information that is so important to this county and I just appreciate y'all letting me come here and talk about it because I certainly do enjoy writing about it. What you're going to get tonight is a old-fashioned paper copy, but we've got new data. The report is still the same, but I added the changed data to the last page. So it's still the same that everybody else will see, but I've just added one extra page. What you'll see tonight here on this slide presentation is the new data because there's no sense me saying the same old stuff. It just doesn't work that way. But are you ready? The purpose of the, of the state of the county health report, there are many reasons why we do it. And the first one is, we assess the progress of the Community Health Improvement Plan. We have, we call them CHIPS. These CHIPS are needed, we do the community health assessment once every three years. And then we take that information, decide what our priorities are, then we decide how are we going to address those priorities? And that's the, those are the CHIPS. And so you know how things kind of like, if you're not really watching it year to year, they get put to the side and you kind of ignore them until you've really got to look at them? These are in front of our face every day, these CHIPS. So we're looking at them, we're assessing it. By having to do the state of the county health report, we are very vigilant in making sure that we are addressing the needs in this community. We like to inform the community stakeholders about the CHIPS progress and we do that throughout the year. We inform the public and stakeholders about the current health status and we have some new and exciting information about that. I like to highlight the health concerns and issues here in Stanley County. And this to me, number five, is the most important one. This is where the community can look and see where they can get involved in addressing the health issues and concerns. That's why I love Stanley County. We don't sit there and just go, "Oh, my gosh, what are we going to do about this? What are we going to do?" We say, "Okay, here's the problem, let's identify it, okay? Now, how are we going to address it?" And that goes from the community to everyday people, to agency people, to elected officials. We don't wring our hands. What we do is look at the problem and say, "How can we address this and make Stanley County even better for all of us?" But of course, we probably wouldn't do this report except for number six. The state tells us, "Thou shalt write a report." And so we do. Now, our priority issues, we have three: tobacco use, substance misuse, and overweight obesity. These were chosen by Partners in Health, which is a group of agency and community people who help us with our community health assessment. And then they also look at the data, look at our results and say, "These should be our priorities for the next three years." And then we take that information, we took it to the Consolidated Health and Human Services Board. They looked at the information within community health assessment. They looked at what Partners in Health said and said, "Yes, those are the three top health issues." We don't ignore other health issues, but these are our top three. Now, causes of mortality, this is some new data, 2014-2018. The numbers in black are the 2014-2018 data. The numbers that are in purple are 2013-2017. I just wanted you to see the difference. And as you can see, heart disease and cancer, all sites, 1 and 2 both spans of time. But the good news is, if you look at 27.4 and 165.8, our rate is down. We're making progress, good progress. So that is a real nice positive. Now, when you look at Alzheimer's disease, that went from the number three cause of mortality and popped to number five. That one, I'm going to show you a chart a little bit later on to show what's going on there, but we are trending upward. We're trending upward. Cancer, trachea, bronchus, and lung, the mortality leading causes of death there was number three last time, it's number four this time. And it has increased by just a point one. It was just a point one increase. Cerebrovascular disease was number six, now it's number five and that increased. And there's 47.4 per 100,000 people in Stanley County that die as a result of that. Now, the CHIPS, they're short-term for one to three years and they're as long-term for five to 10 years. So let's start off with tobacco use. Short-term, you've heard some of these, so I'm not going to go into great detail, but we want to decrease the percentage of people exposed to secondhand smoke. So we were looking at providing or preparing a policy that could go through, that would decrease people smoking on property that the, that the county owns in the cars. But we've tabled that because of the vaping situation. We still need to get a better handle on that because that would need to be included in that. So it will be coming, just not right now. We have one to three years to get that through. Long-term, decrease the percentage of Stanley County adults who are current smokers. And what the state offers here is a quit line resource where people can go online and get the help they need to quit smoking, whether or quit using tobacco, period. And they can talk to counselors, they can do it by themselves through help areas, whatever works for them, it's offered. Plus, we have two trained staff at the Health Department who are trained in smoking cessation. And they will be offering community programs as well as programs for our patients to help with the cessation of smoking. Substance abuse and Project Lazarus. Short-term, community involved in utilizing evidence-based solutions. You all know what a problem we have with substance misuse in this county. I'm not going to stand here and tell you all about it because you can read the paper and you can read everything that's passed to you. But we've gone from where five years ago Jennifer Layton started laying the groundwork. She knew it was a problem then, but there was no traction. She just laid the groundwork, education, 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 and build up those partnerships, those relationships with people in our community and in the surrounding community and in the state. As a result of that, there came a big old grant of a million four, I think, that came down from the feds. And that, she had already done all the work, all the partnerships, and now we can go from the education to the treatment. That's what we have been lacking, is how do we get our folks into treatment? If you know anybody who may be abusing substances or you may have heard from people in Stanley County concerned about that, you know that's a big problem. You can identify it. Now, what do we do? How do we get our people into help? That grant, by partnering with others who provide those type of services, that will help us address that problem. And we're fortunate that EMS has a post-overdose response team, so when they do have an overdose, they send somebody there afterwards and talk with them, see if they need, if they can, if they're interested in getting help, if they're ready for that. So again, there's no hand-bringing. It's what's the problem? How do we address it? And that's what's happening. Long-term, establish a safe syringe program. That will be starting up in a couple of weeks. We have an association with a local church who's interested in that and that will take place. Some people get a little nervous about that, but what evidence has shown is folks that, and it's not, and it's not just for people who maybe misuse drugs, people who, how do people who are diabetic get rid of their needles? This will be an exchange program. If somebody who has to do intermuscular injections, this will be a way to get rid of their, their syringes safely. So that's what we're concerned about. Plus, folks who misuse drugs, this will be an opportunity to ask them, "Are you interested in getting help? What can we do to help you?" And I don't know about you all, but I've picked up needles on my road and I've heard picking up needles in the parks, in the different county agencies where the public has access. So I think this is a, this has been shown to be a proven program to help address that situation. Less harm for the individuals who are using syringes, whether it be for diabetes, drug misuse, whatever. Plus, it's safer for us if we're in the parks and places like that. Obesity, overweight. We give out, we're trying to increase the percentage of adults who consume five or more fruits or vegetables a day. Just ask yourself today, "Did you have five?" I dare say.
I did, yeah. Now I just yell, "Is that it?"
Okay. And we don't count gummy bears either. But what they're doing now is getting vouchers in a farmer's market for Stanley County Health Department patients and the community care clinic patients. So they have access. And we have a farmer's market up at the Commons year-round, year-round. Long-term, decrease the percent of adults who self-identify that they are overweight or obese. The Stanley County Health Department and senior services are offering a diabetes self-management and chronic disease classes for folks to help address this. So that's one way we're dealing with that. Emerging issues, Alzheimer's disease, this is the one. And this is not going to get better, folks, because we are getting older here and it is just trending upward. Some of the things that are happening in Stanley County to address this, like Spring Arbor has a memory wing now to help with that. Care Cafe offers respite services for folks for a couple hours a day. And I'm working with a group of people in the community, I'm just a little person, I'm not ahead of this, working with a group of people who are trying to establish in the process, not trying, but in the process of establishing an Adult Day Healthcare Center. And people want this. We get questions all the time, "When are you going to get something? When are you opening? We need this now." And if you look at the community health assessment, it's a number one request for people between, I think between the ages of 55 and 65. And those are the ones who have older parents who are concerned, "How do I leave mom or dad home alone? I don't want to put them in a nursing home. This would be so much nicer." It's like a day camp for older people. Plus, they feed you. To me, that's a real selling point. But we have race-specific, race-specific infant mortality disparity rates. You can tell right here, our African-American population in Stanley County, they have a higher rate of infant mortality than the whites in our community or than the African-Americans across North Carolina. That is a problem. We have a grant, Healthy Beginnings, that is addressing that problem. You'll notice we don't have Hispanic, Asian, or other minorities up there and that's because the data is not available. But we have Healthy Beginnings, we have an individual on our staff who is out there, she's hit the road running and she is out there talking with women who have minor, who is, who are pregnant with minority children or who have children who are minority or minority children who are two years and younger. So that problem is being looked at and addressed. If you look at race-specific age-adjusted mortality rates, the whites have a higher rate of disease of the heart and other ischemic heart disease, whereas the African-American have higher all causes, cancer, cancer, the trachea, bronchus, and lung. And one of the nice things about this is we have a Minority Health Council now and they're looking at the community health disparities. They're active on boards and they're going to serve as a community resource with the large community and the smaller community, the minority community. This board, you're going to hear more and more from them. They are comprised of African-Americans, Hispanic Latinos, and some Asian individuals. So you've got a little, you've got a group of people that are super dedicated to this and super interested. So you will hear from them as the days come and go. Children's dental care. This is so important. Duke Endowment has given us a grant several times. The first time they gave us a grant, it was to provide sealants for second and third graders. That's a big deal to prevent decay. You all that have children, you know kids brushing their teeth? You try, you really try, but boy, those little teeth are hard to get to. And now, we got a grant for sealants in the public middle schools, sixth and seventh grade. This is a great program to prevent dental caries. And you may ask yourself, "Why is that important?" Think about it. If you have a mouth that has cavities in it, it hurts to eat, you can't think, so you're not going to learn, you're in pain, so you're not going to sleep. This program prevents that, there's education involved. And I'm going to give a plug for our dental clinic that we have at the Health Department. That is one of the best public health programs we offer here in Stanley County. To not only children who are on Medicaid or Health Choice, or I think it's Healthy Choice or Health Choice, but also people who have insurance because we've opened it up to them too. So this is a great program for our kids. Gives them the best opportunity to grow healthy, to grow so that they can learn and be as smart as they can be. This is a good program. Our peer county, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail here, these are our peer counties according to the state. Our life expectancy, we have the lowest life expectancy, we have the highest teen pregnancy rate, but there's good news with that teen pregnancy rate, believe it or not. And we're second highest in percent enrolled in free or reduced lunch. We are the lowest counties, in these peer counties, that have a bachelor's degree or higher. Our median income, household income, is second lowest. We have the highest heart disease and Alzheimer's disease mortality rates. And I just picked these because I was looking to see there's certain, there's various things that tell us what's going on and these are the ones that were important to me. Infant mortality, just in a summary, 8.9% per 1,000 live births. That's a little higher than in the past year, but we're, and we're higher than the state. If you look at repeat teenage pregnancies, 15, 19-years-old, it's 25.5% of teenagers in that age group and it has decreased. That is good news. Suicide rate has decreased. That is good news. The number of dentists that we have here, we have one of the lowest numbers, so we need to pick that up a little bit, but that's 2017. And we've had quite a few dentists come here since then, so I'm looking for that to improve greatly. Now, the entire 2019- Now, the entire 2019 State of the County Health Report is available on the Health Department's website, except for that spare page. And I, coming soon to a place near you, whether it be at work, whether it be at school, whether it be at home, the 2021 Community Health Assessment is coming to you. And I say that, and you may think, "Wait a minute, we're still in 2021. Why are we getting all excited about this?" We will start working on this in July because next year at this time, we will have completed, or almost completed, the 2021 Community Health Assessment. And I am excited about that because the information is incredible to hear what people say. This is what I think is the problem. And then compare that to the data, it is just wonderful fun, fascinating, helpful information. So folks, I know someone's going to come back and remind you of this. I don't know who it'll be, but all I ask is that be ready. And I thank you so much for the opportunity to come before you. I just love writing about Stanley County. There's just so much to write about that is wonderful. We are taking control, we are looking at problems, we are addressing problems, and that is good news for Stanley County. Thank you.
Again, thank you, Debbie, for bringing such enthusiasm to the, the health of our citizens and making it really a forefront of your job and, and bringing it to our attention as much as you possibly can. Thank you for that. Item number four on the agenda tonight is the sale of sheriff's office surplus property. The presenter is going to be Mr. Andy Lucas.
Thank you, members of the board, Mr. Chairman. You have an attached resolution that would authorize the county manager to sell via private sale, personal property worth less than $30,000, per the general statutes that are listed. The sheriff's office is seeking to sell a 2004 Ford Cutaway van to the Southside Volunteer Fire Department via negotiated sale. That Ford Cutaway is used as a sort of a crime scene-type vehicle, hasn't been actively used in several years. Sheriff's Office really doesn't use it, they use other, other resources that they have at their disposal. And so they just, Southside has a, has a, has requested it, they're going to outfit it and use it more as a vehicle to help the volunteer fire departments when they're on scene for different instances, probably similar to what occurred unfortunately yesterday morning. But that's, that's sort of the plan for it, working with Southside to, for them to purchase it and, and put it to use, because right now it's just sitting in the parking lot. It doesn't get, doesn't get, doesn't get used. So we'd ask the, the board to approve that resolution to authorize the manager to advertise and then sell via private sale to, to Southside.
Are there any questions for the county manager? If not, how does the board wish to proceed with the recommendation?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve the resolution by Commissioner Morgan, sir second. Second by Commissioner Fur. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number five tonight's the consent agenda. Unless there's any discussion, what's the pleasure of the board? Commissioner Morgan?
Approve the consent agenda.
A motion to approve the agenda by Commissioner Morgan, sir second. Second by Commissioner Jordan. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. No one signed up for public comment tonight, but if anybody would like to speak, I would like to offer the floor. All right, board comments, announcements, and committee reports. We will start with Commissioner Fur this evening.
I have another second.
Thank you. Commissioner Alman?
Just one thing, just like to thank Ms. Debbie. You got us all fired up up here.
Commissioner Morgan?
I just like, as the county manager mentioned, this weekend, we had two law firms in our town here in Albemarle lose both their offices. So I just like to thank all the Albemarle Fire Department and all the surrounding fire departments that worked those calls because I know it was multiple agencies, not just the city. So thanks to all them guys.
Commissioner Lohan?
I would also like to thank Debbie for her enthusiasm as she presented the report of our health in the county. And Clinton, again, I thank you.
Commissioner Jordan?
Now, Mr. Debbie, if you could make David as animated when he does his reports. That'd be a thing to see now, wouldn't it? Thank you again, ma'am. No more comments from me.
Commissioner Barbie?
No comments.
That brings it to me. Again, I'd also like to thank all the fire departments that were involved in the, the incident yesterday morning. I think it was almost every station in the county. If they weren't directly involved at the scene of the, the two fires, then they were providing some sort of coverage in other parts of Albemarle or for the stations that came to Albemarle. So I know Oakboro helped us at Indy because Indy got called into the city. So it, it really took, took everybody yesterday, and that's what the volunteer service is about. So, and again, Debbie, I appreciate your report, and I have no other comment. We will seek a motion to return to closed session in accordance with General Statute 143, 318.11A4 to further discuss an economic development issue. A motion by Commissioner Jordan, is there a second? A second by Commissioner Alman. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.